I'd like to call the March eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the City Council for the City of Lake City to order. If everyone stands for the pleasure of a legion from nineteen eighty for the application to be given by Councilmember Ricky Johnigan.
Dear God, thank you for all creations. Look over this council, help us make decisions that is pleasing in your society. Look over our first responders and our armed forces in our areas and abroad, and God being we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meetings since nineteen sixty-eight. City Code has prohibited any persons from making personal and pertinent or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous by addressing the council. Yelling or making honorable comments from the audience hostage boisterous conduct such conduct without me tolerating is only one good manner of addressing the City Council. That is to be recognized as speaking code. As a reminder, persons that are likely to carry any gun or carry concealed weapon or firearm by a general body is being fated to abide by these rules if the court will result in a way of offense to the meeting. In my commutations, we have minutes from February the twenty eighth, twentieth February session and February the twenty-sixth, special meeting and February twenty-sixth workshop and March fourth, twenty twenty-four, regular session. Motion.
So, second.
Motion on second on February side approved. Okay, next is approval of the agenda. I've been asked to remove item seven as Mr. Presley was ill and not able to be here soon. Without amendment, it's our motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda, second.
Motion second to approve the agenda on the February side approved. Okay, public participation. Mr. Warren.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for recognizing me. Also, that's the one. There was a motion that took place at last council meeting by Councilman Ricky Johnigan, a mayor that you were aware of. It did not get a second, and because of a lack of a second, you said it failed as the chair, and it would be having an affordable workshop hearing. However, a few days later, we, as the public, those of us that own the agenda list, got an email saying that it had been postponed. Now, the question is, who was involved in postponing that? Because that's something that should have been done in the sunshine, and if it was not done in the sunshine, I'm asking today, while we're all in the public, who were those individuals? I was able to find out that Mr. Carter was one, and through talking to him, I went and saw him. I want to know who were the players involved that canceled the meeting after you, the chair, said we're going to have the workshop?
I don't know.
I mean, I know you don't know, and I'm with you on that, that you don't know, but I'm asking you now to find out. That is public information.
As far as that, I can't take them doing that.
I mean, you can request it be done. I mean, it's public information. I mean, we are public officials, you're public servants.
First of them. They can answer you or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The week before that meeting was scheduled, Ms. X Street Cal said another councilman was hoping to postpone until we have a new city manager, and just was kind of gathering support for against, and I said, I'm really by either way, so if y'all want to, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you're a stand-up guy. I mean, is anybody else that's not willing to be a coward to say who they were, who did not, who voted against having an affordable workshop in which the community is dying to have and need?
I was saying, I'm not saying that to you whether I'm a coward or not, but I did say if we are not prepared that this workshop go out the way it should, then yes, I will say that's wrong.
The workshop went out the way it should have, and so I'm glad to know who the players was, your twenty-sixth run as council. Thank you.
Okay, next is Mr. Lofton.
Hey, my name is Ben Lofton. Just had a couple of questions. Previously, there were some items on the agenda that were never addressed or that I, they must have been removed. One of them was about the shopping carts, and one was about the fire truck, and I was just curious what happened, if they were still going to be brought up again, or if they just disappeared or what? Because the shopping cart, one, I knew the people were pushing hard to get that through, and then it just disappeared, so I was just curious.
The fire truck, because we had a funeral that week, and the shopping carts are not sure, and I think it should be addressed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I can address the shopping cart ordinance. After an initial draft of the ordinance was presented, it became known to the city attorney's office, and there were some state statutes that applied that we needed to research, and so we've done that, and we will be coming back with a modified version to present to the council that takes into account the state statutes that apply to shopping carts and shopping cart regulation.
Okay, so it's coming back. It just didn't fully disappear. And then I understand about the fire truck thing, that, you know, the timing on that, you know?
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that it did come up because, you know, what they have now is only getting older, so.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next is Brian Pittman.
I'm Brian Pittman, Pittman Engineering. I am primarily here, those of you who don't know me, we are one of your consultant engineers, and we were asked to assist with the application to DOT for the EMTSCOP program for grant funding for Camp Street. To my understanding, last meeting, there were some questions on that, so I'm just here to answer any of those for those that may have questions on that.
I don't agree. You want to fill us in kind of where we're at?
Yes, sir. The fifteenth was the deadline, so we have submitted, basically have it to give you an expectation of moving forward typically around the middle of May, end of May. We'll hear back on how it was graded by DOT. That's primarily up to them. We've made sure we hit all the pressure points they typically like to see in an application as far as safety goes, you know, the end of what would be the project does enough at a school. Every time you mention safety, schools, things like that, they always give it better credence over others that may not. So we feel based on the overall total budget we estimated and because of some of the variables to it, you got a good shot, but the only downfall of that is, is the waiting period. DOT typically already has their funds in their big purse, we'll call it, kind of allocated over the current year and next year. So say things to go favorably for the city, and you do get it awarded probably about two years out, is whenever the funding will actually be received and get ready as far as getting the design done, construction done and whatnot. So a little bit of a waiting period, we're hoping for hopeful results, and I'll make sure I update you all as soon as we hear back on how it graded and whatnot. Should it not grade well, we can always go in there, see the areas that didn't grade well, and tweak those areas and try and bump it up the best we can to ensure we get you all the grant funding we can for roadway stuff.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Mr. Pittman?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any kind of cost associated as far as the estimate yet?
As far as overall cost of the construction? So this, we submitted to where there is no match by the city. You all are a ready community, they call it, so there's not a match required. We did apply on that behalf by saying the city would like to request a zero match. That way, there's no cost to you all out of any of your funds. The overall budget for the project, we estimated to be six hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for the overall, and that covers design, CEI work after the fact, while construction's going on, and overall construction costs as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, not to break Robert Rhodes, is there a way that I can respond to that question? Because I didn't know he was doing a presentation as a follow-up as to the grant, if you would allow it.
Yeah, when he gets through.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I guess my only question would be, Mr. Mayor, if we're successful in getting a grant, and this was a question, if we're successful in getting a grant, and we know we're going to get it, is there a way that we can legally find means to pay for it, and then that budget reimburse us back at the time? For instance, everybody wants to go in the opera money, for an example, which we know we've taught, we can't go in the opera money because we voted to freeze, and it's got to be a workshop before the opera money is ever touched, so won't be no money being spent out of that. But we can have a collective workshop on the opera money saying, hey, this, 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 and this, and it can be reimbursed. I mean, is that possible?
I'm not positive. I'd have to get with the staff and the attorney, no, but if it's possible, maybe we could do that.
Okay, because I know Ms. Goggins really, and a lot of people on there really want that road done, and I told her, unlike her council member, that every time it comes up, I will make sure that I speak on it. Thank you.
Next is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Who approved the consent agenda? Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda on the February side. Okay, next is item seven, it's removed till the first of April. We're going to have two resolutions under due business. We have City Council Resolution twenty twenty-four, that says zero two four. We can read that by time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman, you have before you Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh two four, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida approving that certain state highway lighting maintenance and compensation work order for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation for maintenance of certain highway lighting facilities located in the City of Lake City, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date should the council wish to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, appropriate motion would be to approve said resolution as read by title only.
On this one, on the resolution, there's just an error on the dates on the whereas. I think the date is a little bit dated, probably on the.
Yes, that's correct, on the fifth whereas and the seventh whereas.
Yes, so those dates actually should read, I don't want to get too into this next page, July, July the one, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So if that's approved, we just want to make sure that that is the right amount on that resolution. Are we referring to the, to the agreement?
I see that we're following a state fiscal year and not a local fiscal year on that. All right, thank you.
Mr. Warren, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, first of all, Mayor, I want to know why item seven was taken off. That's ceremonial, but item seven is a resolution. How we took off a resolution?
Ms. Presley was ill.
Ms. Presley has nothing to do with this resolution.
Well, they, they asked that at the meeting.
Okay, I deal with Mr. Johnson when the meeting is over. I don't tolerate this type of stuff. We do things right legally, we file complaints, and we get lawyers involved. As we relate to item number eight, is that where, Mr. Mayor? And this is dealing with the maintain, maintenance of lights, or this is for additional lighting because there's a community that suffers because there's not enough light. If you take District Twelve and you take District Ten, it needs more lights than anything. I was just looking at the county agenda, and they got a deal working with DOT for five hundred and sixty-five lights, and what have we filed as a city with all of our staff and grant writers? Have we filed anything to get more lighting in the, what we would call hotspot areas of the community where we're getting the most shootings and killing and troubles?
We're not, we're recently.
I mean, is there something that we can do in the immediate future to work toward that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
What type of timeframe or what can we do?
I'll be there, I'll get my staff and see.
When can I expect to hear back from you on that?
But we want to get prepared for it.
Yeah, I know, but when can I expect to hear back from you on that information?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight, is there a motion as to City Council Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two four?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two four. Second.
Now, motion number second, any discussions? Ms. I can be called over.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Ms. Young? Yes. Mr. Johnigan?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes. Yeah, item nine, the City Council Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two six, Mr. Carter, but you can read that by time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman, before you, you have Resolution, or Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh two six, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida, authorizing task assignment number one pursuant to the continuing contract with RSNH, Inc., a Florida corporation providing for professional construction engineering and inspection services associated with improvements to Southwest Grandview Street, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said task assignment, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said task assignment, authorizing the city manager with consent of the city attorney to make minor changes to the scope of work of the task assignment provided such changes do not increase the quoted price in the task assignment, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date should the council wish to adopt this resolution, appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh two six. It's read by title only.
Is there a motion as to City Council Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two six?
Yeah, I'm going to speak there, right? Can I be recognized?
When? Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, you got to do a better job of seeing this thing. So as we look at Resolution, item number nine, and it's dealing with the Grandview, my question is, what is this as relates to Grandview? Is this engineering to do construction work to the road itself? What does this motion entail, Mr. Mayor? If?
You want me to answer that? Let me answer. The CEI, basically, when you're doing grant funds to the state, you can't use the same engineer to do the inspection, so we have a continuing contract to do this. So this is basically doing all construction and basically engineering and inspection of the project.
So where was this project at as it relates to Camp Street? Was this project prior to Camp Street?
This was in the SCOP grant from two years ago.
This is a SCOP grant from two years ago, and so where we going to be pulling this money from?
It's grant funds.
So it's grant funds, zero matched. All right, so that's fine, just need to get some information. Hopefully, we can move as expeditiously with Camp Street as we're doing with the Grandview. I think that Grandview is in a lot better shape. My girlfriend, Mama, lives off that road, building a house off that road, and it's not in nearby as horrible a condition as Camp Street. So hopefully, you tighten up your belt before they put the axe to you and get a lot more done. We expect a lot more out of everything what you're putting out here lately. Thank you.
Okay, that motion to City Council Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two six.
Luke to approve, Council Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two six. Second.
Now, motion number second, any discussion by council? Ms. I can be called over.
I'm sorry. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Yes. Mr. Johnigan?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes. Okay, item ten, City Council Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two seven. We can read that by time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman, you have before you Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh two seven, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida, approving that certain agreement between the city and the State of Florida Department of Transportation for administration of state grant funds pursuant to financial project number four three four nine two three dash one dash nine four dash two four for the design and construction of a hangar at the Lake City Gateway Airport, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date should the council wish to adopt this resolution, appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh two seven. It's read by title only.
Mr. Carter?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor for recognizing me. Mr. Mayor, is there any way that you could direct staff to give me information on what we are lacking as a municipality from having a regional airport? Is it a difference? Because we have commercial planes flying in all the time. Is there a lack of runway that we're missing that, does it not meet the criteria? What is it that is preventing us from being a regional airport? For instance, and why I say that, there's a convenience of driving to Gainesville and being able to fly out. Lake City can be at that point. A lot of guys are sitting up here and people working, stuck in a box. We need to be thinking about how we can grow the city and how we can make things better and more convenient. I think this town and this city is ready for a regional airport if we plan for it right, and so could you give me the information as to what is missing from us being able to achieve that particular goal?
Not the runway, but now a few years back, they just came in and they were.
No, I'm not asking you about the past. I'm asking you what it takes to currently move forward to get it done. I don't care what happened last year. I don't care what happened to Dr. King. I want to know what it takes to move forward as to how we can get this thing done. We're talking about growth and progression and things of that nature. So next meeting, can you have any information, please? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Leave the gentleman at the airport.
Okay. Yeah, you want to.
Mr. Eagle? Eagle? You want to answer that? Sure.
There is a definite need for growth at the airport for regional, and it's a matter of quantity of people, it's a matter of TSA, it's a matter of security, of course. There are many levels that we have to grow the airport to, to get to that far. For a regional aircraft to be there, you have to have certain quantities of people coming through that airport daily. It just can't be one or two, hey, I need to go to wherever. So it has to be a steady flow of people there daily, and when you have Gainesville, Valdosta, Jacksonville, and Tallahassee within the four quadrants here, they do not see that as a, as a need to be here. Again, it's a quantity issue.
With the mega site and all the house and this getting ready to come and things like we don't exactly look.
Eventually, that will, but mostly it's business aircraft coming in for those businesses that will be coming to the airport.
Okay, so we just TSA issue and everything.
Yeah, there's many issues to grow.
Can you have a top of line and try to figure out who can get them?
Yeah, it takes a little bit.
Okay, is there a motion in the City Council Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two seven?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two seven. Second.
Now, motion number second, any discussion by council? Ms. I can be called over.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Yes. Mr. Johnigan?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes. Next is City Council Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three seven. Mr. Carter, read that by time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, you have before you Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh three zero, a resolution of the City of Lake City, Florida, approving change order number three to that certain contract between the city and SGS Contracting Services, Inc. if said contract was approved and adopted pursuant to City of Lake City Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh nine nine, pursuant to said change order number three extending to May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, the date of completion of the rehabilitation project at the City of Lake City's Waste Water Treatment Plan as such date of completion was initially set forth in said contract, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said change order, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said change order, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date should the council wish to.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to City Council Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh three seven?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero three zero. Second.
Motion number second, any discussion by council? Ms. I can be called over.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Yes. Mr. Johnigan?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes. Okay, next is, I have a discussion, possible action nomination for Northeast Florida being received five hundred dollar donation to a local nonprofit. All applications must be received by April tenth. On that, Mr. Eagle, elaborate on that.
Yes, I have an application for North Florida central economic excellence, I'm sorry. They submitted an application.
Okay, Mr. Warren, do you want to speak to that?
No.
Okay.
And.
And actually, we need to take them there. We get an application again.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think they're asking for a nomination from our city, so if that's the nomination, then we need a motion.
You're making that motion?
Yes.
Second.
What was the motion? To accept this application from the central, North Florida Center of Excellence, 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 I didn't see.
And that was my young second, is it? Any discussion? Ms. I can be called over.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Yes. Mr. Johnigan?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes.
Disinformation purposes, this invoices from January of twenty twenty-four from fellow's welcome. I have a fourteen discussion, possible action approved to create an additional records coordinator position at the Lake City Police Department, in order to keep up with influence of public record requests.
Mr. Mayor?
Change for you on that, but the rest is.
Over the past couple of years, the amount of public records requests we've received at the police department has increased substantially. I work with the city clerk almost weekly coordinating this through the Just Voia program. One of the biggest delays, there are the amount of videos that we have now. Takes a substantial amount of time for the clerks to redact and go through. When we do receive some public records requests, we've assigned a clerk to it full-time, but that does not mean we cannot do our other duties, which include sending reports to court, getting stuff ready to go to court, and people coming in. In addition, with the dispatch center moving out to the county soon, there'll be nobody in the lobby to answer questions, so additionally, those clerks will be required to help people when they come into the lobby during business hours for questions. I was going to hold off on this request until dispatch moved over, and I was going to make this request as part of the four additional officers and the reduction in ten for the dispatchers. However, we're falling so far behind, I spoke with the city manager and the city clerk. We feel this is something that we need to address now, not wait until the dispatch center moves, so I do request that you approve this. The pay difference between.
The pay difference, uh, between a starting dispatcher and the coordinator is seventy-five cents an hour, which works out to about thirty dollars a week. So, it's not a significant increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Mr. Mayor, um, do we have any data, uh, supporting that there's been an increase? I mean, um, police chiefs just can't come up here and not do a presentation and demonstrate to us through CAD reports and through everything else that there's a need for this service. Uh, I, if, if, if everybody is honest, the only thing that's got the public records requests backed up at the police department is that my Jewish attorneys have filed a, uh, motion asking for public records requests from two thousand and fifteen that I've paid twenty-four hundred dollars and I still have not received. And so, it is no influx. It is people who lack the ability to do their job and to know how to time management. This hasn't never happened before. I want to see, as a taxpayer, I want to see the records, I want a presentation done, a workshop. We can't be creating positions and spending money without things properly being invented. That's the problem with this city. Y'all just spending people money like it's yours. You wouldn't spend your money like this, Mayor. If you had to go in your back pocket and write a check, you would not be in a new position at your law office unless you had substantial data to say to do so. You, where's your substantial data that says do this?
I don't have the exact figures, but I think that was.
But you don't have, where is it at? Where's the public, the public didn't see it. The public have not seen it. It ain't right, it is not right, Mr. Mayor. No, 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 I don't should have to do a public records question, you got it on the agenda. You should have it up there on the screen like anybody else does. Why is it not on the screen for the public to see it? Every other town has TVs and monitors showing all of their data. We are a dated machine that lacks the ability and the wisdom to be able to do things above board and to do it in a way that's transparent and people such as taxpayers like myself and others get a real ROI on their tax investment, which is a return on investment, by the way, with you an accountant and you know that, Mayor. And also, Mayor, by you being an accountant and not, uh, having all this done, you would be, uh, breaking your fiduciary responsibility as well. And so, the rest of the board knows. You can read it, but it's not to the public. And so, y- you would be in violation, as a CPA, you would be in violation of a lawyer, and the board would be in violation of fiduciary responsibilities. Because now he's coming in saying that he, he's wanting this position early before time and what, what has been presented to justify that we needed before now? Where's the justification that has been made to the public? You have to make a public justification, Mayor. So, I would ask that you respectfully table this item until we have a workshop and we come back with the right information for the public to know what money is getting spent on. I ask you, Mayor, to do the right thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move to council.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve, uh, this additional coordinator, uh, with the, within the Lake City Police Department.
Second.
Motion number second, any discussion?
Mayor, I don't, I really don't see, is, what is the problem that we can't provide this information? Has it been provided?
It, it's data, I mean, it's not that hard to provide it, but, uh, I know that public records request, request from that level last few years. And we could get it out there, we might have it next week, but I know it has come up.
And we get it provided?
Sure.
Mayor, excuse me, Ms. Young, are you referring to the data that he was just looking at? Or are you referring to his, his request that he's making reference to?
I don't know what he's, what the mayor is looking at. But what I'm referring to is, um, the information as to, um, the increase, why do we need the, 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 the?
Right, and we got any discussion? There are motion number second, this side will be called over.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
No.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Okay, comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to just, uh, give a brief kudos and list off a couple of names, a few names. Uh, last week, I had the opportunity to, um, do a tour with, uh, the director of water treatment, Mike Osborne, out there at the college. Um, got a chance to meet some of his, uh, staff out there, uh, Brandon Chastain, John Conyers, Earl Crossman, Daniel Moore, Aubrey Parrish, Al Sloan, and of course, Mike Osborne, um, was wildly impressed with that facility. They run a really tight ship and they keep our water clean and coming, so just want to give them a shout out.
I don't know if you saw it?
Cause I got, um, on this, uh, interview schedule, um, are we gonna interview single or?
You mean the candidates?
Yeah.
I think she had it to do it individually.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin, Mayor, Mr. Martin could report on, he had independent meetings with each one of you, so he could probably report better on that.
Sure.
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question, I guess.
I want to know, are we gonna interview these candidates individually or as a group?
Uh, as I understand what, uh, has been proposed, uh, and, and the schedule that's in front of us right now, it's actually both. Uh, on day three, uh, there will be, uh, one-on-one interviews with, uh, each council member and, uh, each of the candidates, uh, with the exception of, uh, Councilman Jernigan, who has, uh, requested a, a different format for his, uh, individual interview time. And so, uh, his will be, uh, with the, the group as a whole, uh, for the first day. Uh, and then, uh, on, let's see.
Day three.
Miss Sykes, you'll, is it day three?
Day three, I think.
And I didn't get a chance to study this, uh, okay, at one P M., then we have the, I see on day three now, at one P M., then all three candidates would come in for an interview with the council.
Mayor, man. And I, I was one of the ones, um, who agreed that they come in as a group on the, the last interview. But, um, after considering, I just, it, it, it really takes away when you have them all there interviewing in a group. I really think that they should be, um, separate interviews on that, that, uh, uh, council interviews, full council. I think it should be separate interviews.
Well, in the past, we brought the individuals in one by one to interview them. Uh, but I, I disagree with this format here because I just think that if all three candidates are sitting there, they pretty much can, can be off what the other ones is saying. So, I think, me personally, that we should, you know, bring them in one by one and interview them. And that's the way it has been done in the past.
Well, I think all three of them should be sitting right out there and then we have the full council. And then we all just interview them one by one. You ask a question, I ask a question, and it just keeps on going and then it comes back, back and forth until we get done. Uh, I think that, that's the best way to do it. You, uh, one-on-one, uh, that means that, that person can look, uh, listen, uh, to the questions that we may or may not ask. And, uh, they could study that. However, um, e- e- either way, it doesn't matter to me, but I, I, I think three days is a long stretch. Uh, I think we should bring them in on one day, uh, give them a tour, come to the meeting, get the interview, get everything out of the way in one day. That's what I think.
I would like to respond to that. This is a very serious matter and, uh, we can't look at the time. If it takes a month, then it takes a month, but we have to be serious about the choice we make. So, we can't be on this microwave thing. We, we have to spend the time that's needed with these, um, with the applicants. If we rush it, we're gonna end up in a, in a bad situation. So, I see, I, I should, I would like to see an interview, um, individually.
I think that's the way I vote, but, uh, I like the individual, so that's.
That's, that's where you go.
Carter?
Individuals finally.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, we can modify this, um, this draft, so we can do, we start them at one P M.
Right.
Uh, we can do it one P M. and then, uh, schedule the next one, say at two P M. and then the next one, say at three.
Okay.
Now, I do need, um, to, um, if you each would, uh, take your draft home and just kind of look at some dates. I don't have any dates from, from everyone, so if we can get this scheduled.
Oh, good, that was my text.
Yes, ma'am. I don't have any dates, um, I do know, I would ask you guys to keep in mind, um, we've all got one P M. meeting on day three. That will actually have to be a special call meeting for that purpose, so we need to keep that in mind. Uh, Mr. Martin, um, has submitted, um, let's see. Mr. Martin will be out of town. I know we were trying to build it around a council meeting, um, date, but, um, he will be out of town like the sixteenth through, let me get it up here. Like the morning of the, the, out the evening of the sixteenth, back about the morning of the twenty-fourth is what I have down. So, um, that's going to allow that second meeting in April, building it up to that, unless we start it on a weekend and pull it through.
Okay, well, let's get everybody to review and say what. Yeah, we're, there is a, we should go to John.
Well, those two.
Wait, wait, wait. Well, what we talking about, uh, three days? Uh, I, I just don't think it's necessary for us to do three days, uh, with these candidates. Uh, and thi- this is not a rush. This is, you, you doing your homework for all of us. We gotta do our homework and make sure we got the, uh, uh, the proper candidate, uh, for this position. Um, I want to take my time. That's the reason why I say, uh, we have prolonged this, uh, a long time. So, now it's time for us to, uh, to make a decision, uh, based on the information that we interview and, uh, you know, checks. It's a, it's a check and balance situation. So, uh, again, if we want to go ten days, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I can go ten days if you want. Uh, three days is not long enough, maybe, so, um.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I might, uh, just kind of elucidate this a little bit. If I understand this correctly, the idea is that day one is effectively acquainting themselves with the city. Obviously, the folks coming from out of town. Uh, day two would be probably quite a few hours of each of them meeting with each of us and staff? Or is it each of us on the third day?
Third day.
Third day, so the first day, they're meeting with, like a meet and greet here with the, with the staff, department heads, things like that. And then the third day would be meeting with us individually and then an interview and then perhaps a decision.
Right.
And that seems like a, seems like a not unreasonable amount of time.
Yes, you, you, when you talk about, uh, we, we don't make a decision that night, you, you?
That's what I said, possibly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I make some noise, but I guess we could.
No.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Johnson, um, I know y'all about time to be asked about Gwin Lake. Um, could you, Ms. Shannon, give me an update on Gwin Lake?
I don't know that I can.
Yeah, uh, we're still, the information is still pending for the applications that we submitted for Gwin Lake. The, um, the R E F application, I sent an email again today trying to get some information on where the city stands with, um, that's the rural infrastructure fund. And then, of course, with the, uh, Suwannee River Water Management District, we are, I believe, in a great position there. We're working with them closely and, um, nothing but positive feedback coming from them. So, I can't say for a second, but soon I think I'll be able to make a statement that we have some, found some funding for Gwin Lake, yeah.
So, you, you say you, you in close, uh, with, uh, Suwannee River Management. Um, a few, a few months ago, they met around the lake.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, one of them, uh, asked me that if I could produce a picture of the way that lake used to be. Um, is that possible if I could give you or Mr. Johnson that picture or a picture?
Yes, I, and also, I think I put some pictures in your, um, emailed them to you. I'm not sure if they got printed and put in your box, but I did go out and speak to a family that's been around that lake for a while and they were able to send me some old pictures as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I will take them. If I have any of those prior history photos that I can add to the application and strengthen our narrative, I think it will definitely.
I'll get them to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, move, Mayor.
All right. Second.